Included in the packet in the information reports is the minutes from the February 8th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and also 5.2 is an update on the Seventh Street Crossing. We got Mr. Smith to give us a staff report on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I was asked to provide an update on the Seventh Street Crossing, so I'll just put this together and try and keep it as brief, but as informative as possible. Just off FEMA requires any structure built in a floodway does not, should not create a rise in the baseball elevation upstream from where it's at. Unfortunately, the boxes that were placed in around 2010 were not permitted at the time through FEMA or the Army Corps of Engineers, so they were not included in the floodplain model. During the second flood event in July of 2019, that completely rendered the Seventh Street Crossing not only unsafe but impassable. The city applied to FEMA public assistance to replace the crossing. What had to be done, in 2020, the city had hired interstate engineering to begin working on the hydrology, hydraulic studies and design for the replacement of the structure. And the reason we did that is because, again, when they were originally put in, they were not permitted. They were, they pretty much were illegal. We replaced them in there illegally. Meanwhile, the city paid a contractor to restore the creek banks in order to complete a pre-construction model for interstate to work off for the Seventh Street Crossing. FEMA did reimburse us for that project. The creek bank reconstruction was completed in late summer of 2020. The current status, interstate engineering has developed a plan and a cost estimate for a low water crossing using three concrete boxes, 18 feet wide each, and a low water crossing means that it will flood in a hundred year storm, but will be passable most of the time. The reconstruction plan was then submitted to FEMA in March of 2021 for floodplain approval. FEMA did agree that the design would not create a rise in the baseball elevation and would be floodplain compliant. The plan was then submitted to FEMA's Office of Public Assistance for funding consideration. In January of 2022, FEMA requested from the city additional information on this project. The requested information was submitted to FEMA as soon as possible in January 2022 after the request. What are some of the recent developments? An amendment for the Seventh Street Crossing and associated bike path was drafted by FEMA Program Delivery Specialist Office of Public Assistance with the amended information. The amended plan, along with all the relevant backup documentation, was then submitted to FEMA funding for internal review on February 11th of 2022. We are currently waiting for the review to be completed and for FEMA's determination on funding eligibility. Currently, right now, the total estimated project cost in 2021 was just under $900,000. It's anticipated with cost today, this project could well over $900,000 to replace or put in this crossing. If approved at the current cost estimate, FEMA may cover 75%. The state of South Dakota may contribute up to 10%. The city would need to cover the remaining 50, 15% if this is fully funded through FEMA public assistance. Interstate engineering is currently 95% complete on the project design, and we are awaiting FEMA funding approval. FEMA has up to 18 months from February 11th to review and make a determination, or they could come back and ask us for more information, which resets the clock. Here's, here's just a breakdown of what FEMA approved from the flooding of 2019 from the Cost Recovery Center. From the 2019 flooding presidential declared disasters, Blanch Street Crossing, the work was completed, Sly Elk Raccoon Road, Glencoe Drive repairs were, were done and work was completed. The Dudley Street Levy, that work was completed. The post office embankment repair, that work was completed. The downstream Seventh Street Levy and roadway area work was completed. The Seventh Street Crossing, as I said, we are currently awaiting funding approval by FEMA. Total approved projects obligated by the FEMA Cost Recovery Center are just over $8 million. This is not the amount that's been reimbursed to the city. These projects are 75% have funded from FEMA again, 10% state, and 15% local. What has FEMA reimbursed to us so far? Paid to the city to date for the, these obligated projects, including the debris cleanup from all the branches and everything that came down. We've recovered $272,665.65 in reimbursements for the projects that we have paid out. Seventy thousand plus was for the post office, the BLM property and the ass curve embankment repairs. 576.96 was flood response administrative costs. That's for the staff to do the paperwork. Hundred and thirty thousand, sixty-two, sixty-one was for the Blanch Street Glencoe Drive repairs. Fifty-four thousand, four-hundred-nine was for Sly Elk and Raccoon Crossing repairs, reimbursement. Seventeen thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty covered the cost of what cost us to clean up the debris and remove the debris. FEMA has not yet reimbursed the city for additional post flood administrative costs, although these costs have been obligated, but they have not been, the money's sitting up here. The repair and the arming of the Woodland Drive embankment, the Seventh Street Crossing, which is still under consideration by FEMA funding. Any questions?
So, can we not start any construction or even do anything until FEMA reviews everything and makes a determination?
There's always a possibility they're going to say no. If the council and the city wants to start spending 900-plus thousand dollars to put in a crossing that may or may not be funding available by FEMA, we've got the model, we can do it, but...
No, it's not about necessarily paying the whole thing, but is there preparatory things that can be done? So, when, when, if, if the determination is an approval, then we can move more quickly to execute.
We are, we are already currently, the night, when I say we're at 95%, the 5% is actually starting and doing the project. The 94, the biggest part of that project was to create the model, to get the no rise, to, to, to design the crossing that FEMA would approve and the Corps of Engineers would approve to be placed in the floodplain. What we had prior wasn't, it wasn't correct, and it create, according to the model, created a rise. So, that's why we hired a consultant, the interstate engineer, to do that. So, the only part left on this is to actually construct the crossing. Everything else is done. Everything else is approved.
Including the preparatory work of the repairs and things like that, that all had to be done. The reinforcement of the banks and things like that had to be completed before the hydraulic study could even be, say, this is how it's going to be.
Exactly. We had to complete all the other repairs, which are done. And then the, the model was submitted, that the work that FEMA, or excuse me, the work that interstate engineer completed was submitted to FEMA, and they approved it. They approved that. The only thing that they haven't approved yet is the funding for it. And this is hazard mitigation funding, because the crossing was never, that part crossing was never supposed to be there. It was supposed to be a low water crossing. So, for them to pay to repair something that shouldn't have been there in the first place, that's, that's where we're at. That's where it's a, it's a 50-50 shot.
In addition, I think it's important for the council to be aware, as well as the people, that when we say 95%, the plans are completed, they're essentially ready to go out to bid. We just have to insert the dates and things like that, which of course, we don't know until we get that from FEMA. And so, we have proceeded to the point that there's nothing left really to do until we get the final approval from FEMA, then at that point.
And right now, they got 18 months, would it be August of 23 to make that determination?
Yes, they have 18 months.
If they take the 18 months.
Yeah.
Yeah, from the, from the date of this, that was submission.
February 11th.
February 11th of this year, because they asked for additional information from us on who did, again, who did, completed the repairs on the embankment, what those costs were, and all that. So, I resubmitted all that information, even though it was in the grants portal, I had to resubmit it to them.
So, I, I understand what you said, that, you know, sometimes they kind of pause a little bit on fixing something that shouldn't have been there. When you say shouldn't have been there, it was more whatever the design we had shouldn't have been designed that way, correct? Because it seemed like there would be a need for a crossing there, you know, from a public safety perspective, just, you know, there's not a lot of, you know, approaches up into those neighborhoods. So, what, what part would they be concerned about? Is it just the fact that we're fixing something that was not designed to whatever the standards were for low, you know, the flooding areas, or is there, are there a concern of even having a crossing there?
There's not a concern about having the crossing there, because they've approved the design. The biggest concern was, is that the crossing that was there was never, we never, the proper steps weren't taken when it was placed in 2010. There should have been a LOMAR completed and a study, which what we've done now, and the designs have been submitted.
I would think the determination should be based on, there's a need there to have one, and let's make sure we design it to the, whatever the right standards are versus, it seemed like we're going over old stuff, we're talking about what was there before. If there's a need for it, I would think FEMA would calculate that in that determination if they want to support this or not.
And, and they do, and they look at two blocks away, there's a bridge, and then two blocks the other way, there's a bridge that access those neighborhoods. That's what the, one of the, one of the project specialists that was working with us.
So, they may come up and say, hey, yeah, you can do it, but we're just not going to give you 75%. We might give less than 75%. We may not give you anything because of the things you just pointed out.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have no problem. They've approved the design, and they said, you can build it. That's not a problem. It's just, now, here, here we are is, is, I'll go out to bid if you guys say it's okay to spend 900 to a million dollars to put that crossing in.
Yeah, not, not an argument, Dave. I just want to make sure everybody understands the problem, you know, just kind of manage expectations a little bit is all.
And I guess what I just wanted to make clear is that if we do start the project, and, so will they not reimburse us if we start it and they haven't approved it?
We don't, they've approved the project, but whether or not they'll reimburse us is where we're at. And they, they could say no, and then now we've started a project, and we're going to build a project and spend that money without any reimbursement from hazard mitigation.
But we know we're, we're planning on doing it anyways, aren't we?
Not to my knowledge. It's, 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 it's up in the air.
I thought it was determined that we were going to do some kind of crossing there, and it was just the type of crossing we did depended on the funding that we got.
I just think for a point of clarification, for, and I think maybe where Angela is trying to go, is if we build it, FEMA accepts it, if it washes out, we'll replace it?
Yeah, as it, as it's designed right now, if we build it, we pay for it, and we have another disaster that destroys that bridge as designed, it will then be eligible for FEMA funding. The bridge that was there would have been eligible for FEMA funding, but when, when they found out that we never permitted it to put it in, we didn't have the proper permits, and it wasn't designed properly, that's when they put the brakes on, on funding anything, and said, we need more information.
And I think to back up a little bit for clarity, and I don't want to, no action coming out of this, this is a discussion and an update, but the fact that, I think Angela's stating is, so, they could come back 18 months from now. If we decide to start building that beforehand, we get it all complete, they come back, say, yes, you're approved, that money could still come in.
Correct.
That was part of what you were saying there, wasn't that right?
Right.
It's, it's always possible that we'll get that 75 and 10.
Complete project, not started project, nothing.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
I guess my concern is just if we were going to do something, if we were planning on putting some kind of crossing there, if we could do something, then some kind of temporary crossings, something so that whether it's a pedestrian bridge or something so that people have a way to get across that area.
In that word, one of the complaints is, we used to walk to the post office.
And the grocery store.
And the grocery store. Now they can't. But with that being said, if we built it, how would we fund it? What I'm saying is, I don't want to get in a situation where property taxes escalate because we got to pay for a million dollar bridge, and you know it's going to be a million bucks.
Well, it's just a crossing, not even a bridge.
Yeah, I mean, the estimates were just under 900,000 in 2021, and we've all seen what's happened with construction costs and labor costs, and, I mean, I, it's going to be a million plus. I can almost guarantee you.
Is there a way to do anything, like just a pedestrian crossing, something for foot traffic or bikes in the meantime?
Whatever we do there, we'd have, we have to, we have to submit to FEMA and have it approved that ensures that it doesn't create a rise. And I'd be more than happy to get our, our engineer on it if that's something that you guys decide that you want to do.
Just wondering if that was an option.
One thing I look at is we're coming into spring, and we do something, I mean, it's going to more than likely wash out if we do get some more snow and rain and everything else too, I guess. I just don't want to throw some money, throw it away, essentially, I guess, on something until we, but in the fall would be a good time too, I guess.
You know, Angela, I can put that on the agenda for the Infrastructure Committee and kind of see what our options are.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
You bet. I hope that answered everybody's questions, but y'all know how to get ahold of me if you have more. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Item six is announcements and praise. I'd like to take a moment here and pray, if you'd like to join me. Heavenly Father, we come before you and thank you for the ability to meet and to reach out to you in prayer. We submit our plans to you. We come to you broken, and we know our righteousness comes from your blood and your sacrifice on the cross. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Notes on what I have for announcements and praise. Petitions due this Friday by 5:00 PM Mountain Time for the upcoming April 12th election. March 5th is the last Cracker Barrel up at the county building with the state representatives, and the chamber puts that on. And last, I got Hometown Market Open House on the 3rd from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Anybody else have any announcements and praise to add to my list here? Item seven is councilor's update. Councilor Sigmund has volunteered this time through with excitement, so I'll turn it over to you, Dean.
I'd like to see your definition of volunteer. Real quick, so, a long time ago, when I was in college, one of the majors that I had in my short time in college was do the councilor's update. My response, my gut reaction was still, no, I don't want to do that. But I told Mark that I would, and, you know, I just, I think about the group of people that we have up here, and I think about other councilor's updates that I've listened to, and I think, you know, I'm, I'm not as seasoned as Mike. I'm not as thorough as Angela. I'm not as passionate as Kevin. I'm not as knowledgeable as Mark. I'm not as well spoken as Becca. I'm not as smart as Aaron. I'm not as well known and respected in the community as Jason. I do have that going for me. But with that said, you know, I was, as I was thinking about this, I think, you know, I'm, I'm here for a reason. And I like to think that that reason is more so than I just ran unopposed for word for. But that reason is because of balance that I can bring and the ability to try and listen and bring people together, which I think is something that we really need right now. And not everything's always going to go great, and people aren't going to be on the same page, but the ability to respectfully disagree and continue to try and work through issues is, is going to be very important to try and bring our community together and get through some of the things and challenges that we have. We have a great group of counselors up here, and I'm very, very fortunate, very blessed to be able to call these people friends and, and to know them, and to not always see eye to eye, but still respect their opinions and learn from them. And with that, you know, I, I want to, I want to represent our ward well. I want to listen to people. I've been requested to visit with people, and I haven't met all those obligations, and I need to do better at that. So, with that said, anybody that's listening, anybody that's here, if you, if you feel so inclined that you'd like to visit with me about anything, please feel free to make that request, and I'll do so, and continue to try and grow this community. I'm, I'm very thankful to be part of this community. I am, I am glad that I put in a petition, and I'm, I'm happy, or I'm anxious to see where this city goes. Thanks.
Thanks, Dean. Next item on the report is the city manager's report, so Mr. Angelo will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The first item, and it's, can be found on our website, is our KPI reports for January, so that information is available. It's pages eight through 24 in your packet. Beyond that, we have several payroll changes. We have two new patrol officers that are starting with us. We have a adjustment in, in our liquor store for our liquor store manager. And also, we have our staff engineer, who is thankfully going to be joining us, I believe, in two weeks. And then also, we are going to be making some market adjustments for our lifeguards to make sure we're competitive with some of the other entry level positions that are found throughout our community. And also, we have a new custodian who will be joining us. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Daniel. Item nine is consent calendar. We have 9.1 through 9.11 tonight. Does council wish to remove any of those items and discuss, discuss them individually?
I'd like to remove 9.11.
We got 9.11.
Shooting sports complex and have a discussion on that separately.
Any other items from council to remove and discuss individually? How about anybody in the public? Any consent calendar items to, to be removed? Yes, sir. Yep, we got that one on there. So, we got 9.11 is the request to remove. Is there a motion for the rest of the consent calendar? So, we got a first by Becca for 9.1 to 9.10, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got a second by Mike. We have minutes, so we're going to go ahead and roll call. I'll start with myself. I'm, yes, Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Becca?
Yes.
Consent's approved, minus 9.11. That item, I guess, is a brief summary. There's been some discussion and some smaller committees of support for this letter to send concerning the gun range approximately 35 miles from here on the outskirts of Rapid. Aaron, you got any particular questions, or just wanted to make sure we had an open discussion on this?
Well, I guess, you know, did we get a request then from Game Fishing Parks to support? Is that, because it seems like the letter that we have there is the Game Fishing Parks, right, in support? Is that something they asked for? Where, where did the, the ask come from?
I don't think it was a request from them at all.
Actually, I brought up the support of the shooting complex. Shooting sports have been a big part of our community, and not just Sturgis, but the entire Black Hills. There isn't a facility like this anywhere in West River, South Dakota. And although they're not popular anywhere, this seems like a good location. We had some meetings with the Game Fishing Parks on some other things, and it seemed like a reasonable support to put forward this thing that can help grow community, but not just our own, but our entire region.
You know, regardless of what's the city of Sturgis does, it seems like it's growing legs. You know, I saw today, I think the Senate approved, what, 2.5 billion? You know, that's going over to the House. I don't think it's going to not pass. But, you know, obviously, this is a little bit of contention in this one. I mean, there's, you got that Bible camp that's pretty close to it. You got all the landowners next to it that are not in support. You know, I think they were talking about, what, 6,000 people a month potentially is what they've projected, and so people are concerned about the noise, the impacts on the roads and that type of stuff. So, you know, again, it, it's just one of those contentious issues that really doesn't have a direct impact right now on Sturgis. Now, granted, there could be some economic, you know, based on numbers, people coming through there, but, you know, being such a contentious issue, and it's a landowner's type of situation, I don't know, it just seems something at least we should think about and discuss before we would go forward with it.
I'm, I'm going to take the con to that, Aaron. I'm going to side with the property owners. I think it's going to be eventful for the property owners in the area. I think it's going to be an issue for the livestock producers in that area. I can't think of a better place to have it, but we are the county seat for those people, even though the city is not the county seat. We do support the county seat. I'm, I don't think Sturgis needs to throw their support behind a federal project. This is Game Fishing Parks. They're going to build it with our blessing or without, and for that reason, I would prefer not to send the letter of support.
Any other discussion from council or questions? Go ahead, Becca.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to just say that I concur with Councilor Bashand. I don't believe that the city of Sturgis needs to submit a letter for this project. It is, what I believe, a county and state issue, and the city may seem, see some minimal economic benefits, but my belief is most of that will be going to Rapid City, especially given that Cabela's is south of the location. So, again, it's, to me, a county and state issue, and I don't think that we need to weigh in on it.
Any further discussion?
I guess I'd just like to point out that I, when this was first brought up, and, and we discussed this, and initially, you know, there was, there was a lot of support for, for Kevin's idea and support of this because of thinking of the positive effects of this. And, and I feel like I don't want to go back on any support that would have had a discussion that we would have had from the beginning, but that was, I guess, ignorance on my part as far as not taking in the whole scope of the picture. So, I, I think, I think it's a great discussion that we're having, and, and I'm glad that it was brought up.
Other discussion, public or council? Come on up to the microphone, please, state your name, and let us hear what you have to say, sir.
Good evening, Council. My name's Tyler Woods, joining landowner to the proposed shooting range. So, come here tonight, my first city council meeting. Apologies for never being here to one before, but figured I've been everywhere else, might as well come inform you guys and then join, join the party here as well. Yeah, I come here, I'm sure glad to hear some remarks that Mr. Bashan made here. It's been quite an uphill fight according to this issue, and when you take on the state of South Dakota, it's always an interesting task at hand. We've been to peer three times now and testified in front of committees, in front of peer regarding the issue. We defeated them the first time under funding bill, but they're coming back at us again. They just won't quite go away. I would ask you to not send this letter forth as a, as a city of Sturgis. As Benson before, you are kind of our spokesman for us as far as county seat wise. You do have the population, you do have the majority in the county, so anytime you guys set anything forth, you're kind of setting forth a, I guess, word for everybody within the county. And I would, I would advise you to talk to your people in your districts, in your wards, and ask them truly about this project. This project is going to be nothing but a headache, I think, for the county of Meek County, and the economic effects that Sturgis is going to see is going to be a very minimum at all. Now, I do enjoy the land, and quite frankly, I used to own the land that this projected. We used to join, own the land that this projected shooting range is coming upon. We owned it for 70 years. I know the land pretty well. We've been here in our location since 1884. It's something that we know well, and as you can tell, I'm very passionate about this issue at fourth in hand. As mentioned before, I think the economic impact Sturgis is going to be a minimum, because you are 11 miles straight south to eight hotels inside of Rapid City. You are 11 miles from the shooting range to the I-90 corridor, that's a straight shot south. Eight of those 11 miles being paved road currently as it sits within the county. Cabela's is 12 miles from the current shooting range, along with multiple other shooting facilities, ammunition places, shopping, staying, anything like that. Elevate Rapid City and multiple people from Rapid City have testified on behalf of this shooting range, because of course, they're anxious to see that, that's where all the money is going to go. The county facing currently in this deal is, we're going to The county facing currently in this deal is we're gonna sacrifice all the finances, road, property values, everything else. Me County is gonna be the one to suffer the cost here on this project. Me County in Sturgis is not gonna gain any money from this project forth. Not to mention the havoc like Mr. Mashan says is gonna lead on our daily lives of trying to uphold our operations. We're, we're, we're a registered cow calf operation. We run mom, we run cows, sell bulls in the spring. A lot of the guys around us, we're all cow calf operators. We've done nothing but try to leave people alone and help out the community as we can. This project is not gonna drop down our property values, but is also gonna make our way of life havoc. You know how our, uh, police presence has been and what they can afford as far as county wise, city wise? We can't afford the extra tax on roads or security or safety, fire, anything like that. We're taxed already as a county as it sits. I think if you guys sent this letter forward, it would be, send the wrong message to the citizens, not only of Sturgis, but of the county, as stating for something that is, quite frankly, could be a nightmare for multiples. So I'm glad, I'm encouraged by some of the discussion you guys had here. This is some positive we had. Uh, we've been in constant contact with the county commission as well, working with them on behalf. Um, there's a lot of things the state needs to done that they have said they may do or promise to do that. I mean, I sat through every testimony committee and commission meeting with them and they haven't told very many truths yet. So I encourage you guys to educate yourself better. And if you want me to educate, if you wanna reach out to me, I'm available. You can get ahold of me anytime. Uh, we were happy to tell our side of the story on it anyways and, but I do encourage you guys to not send this letter forth. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to make a suggestion, Mr. Woods.
Yes.
When I lived in the country, I had a post office box because I never had a rural mailbox. It was always shot up every time.
If you drive around the county right now and, and look at the, uh, signage and signs and road signs and anything that exists, it's all, it's all shot up, beat up, been beat up. There's been, I, you know, I had Prairie Dog towns behind a road. You'd be surprised how often people just sit there and shoot in the middle of your cows, middle of you, shooting off the road. I mean, the mid, the issues we're having already out there are, just since he paved Elkville from the Rapid, from Pennington County line to Elk Creek, which is three miles from the, the site here. And just the amount of riffraff and trouble we have already is greatly overwhelming and hard to maintain as it is, alone bringing a project of this nature with as much uncertainties as it has forward is what just increased it so immensely to already an ongoing issue.
Thanks, Mr. Woods. Any other discussion, council or public? Come on up, Bonnie. Bonnie's got something here.
Bonnie Alberts. I wanna thank Tyler for that because he has the expertise. He does know what this is about and I have to say, I have absolutely none. But this county is an ag-based community. And there are many of us who are not ag-funded, ag-income, I for one. But how can we not stand up for and protect the rights of our neighbors, of our greater community? And I too am opposed to sending any kind of, of statement that says we support this. I don't see how we can support this. My frustration is that, like you, everything I've seen come down the line either doesn't ring true or they're going forward in spite of resistance that says we don't want this. We're being sacrificed to the benefit of Pennington County and specifically Rapid City. And I guess I would beck and becka to help me know how to make my voice heard at the state level. I've done a lot of complaining about what's going on at the state level and some of the things I've seen happening. But I did go to the last Cracker Barrel and there was nothing there that supported this or gave any reasoning that we should support it. What do I do? How do I get my voice heard? How do I get my next door neighbors in towns' voices heard? Because I think we have to stand for our county community as well. And yes, it's down there on the edge of the county, but we can't forget that. And I don't know a flip about cows or anything else. But I know that Bob would have had a hemorrhage if this were going in where he was running his cattle. And I don't always understand the details of how or why because it's not my area of expertise. But we have to help. We have to help with that. We can't, we can't throw in on this. And even without the ag issue, I just don't see where the money's coming from with all the other issues we have in this state. Why is state money in this sum going toward this project? I have a gun. I like to shoot. I like to target shoot. But my desire to do that should not sacrifice someone else. So let's not do this, but let's do more than not do this. Help us understand as individuals how to buck this. And, and Becca, you're the best at research and knowing what those trails are. So I sent you a message and we haven't gotten together, but, um, learn me. I, I need to know how to fight this. I don't like what I see going on in the state right now. And it's, you know, down the torpedoes, full speed ahead and where the torpedoes? I mean, they're just not listening to us at all and I don't see why not. So help me.
Thanks, Bonnie. Any other discussion on the action of sending this letter or not? Just go ahead, Jason.
I, shooting has been something since I was a little kid, um, that I truly enjoy and continue to have my family do. Um, I know there's a need for it. I've never really had the, the problem of being able to go someplace and shoot. Um, as a lot of us around here, the Great Black Hills was one place that people would go. Um, but, uh, sometimes as the shooting sport grows, um, a lot more people are getting into some long range shooting and whatnot, I guess. But, uh, so there is a place for them to shoot at. Um, but I do feel that, I guess it's not necessarily our spot to be stepping in, uh, the county and state. As Becca had said, they're, uh, it's their, their level for that. Um, but I feel that Me County is gonna get sort of the, like, the, the brunt of having to do the repairs, the road, the, the, and I guess I'm just gonna sort of step away from that right now, I guess.
Thanks, Jason. What else, Bonnie?
Well, I understand step away, but can we go one step farther and step up again?
Yes, sir.
For the record, Bonnie stating, is there other options versus just the approval of sending the letter? Procedurally speaking, um, the council can choose to have no action from this item. Um, not send a letter, not make a stand either way and just have no action. We can, if a motion is made and seconded and enough votes are had, then a letter to either approve, to approve for me to sign it and send it to the Game Fishing Parks, or there's also the action of not making the statement of not signing it, um, having that as an action.
I would move to table this item with no action in any way, shape or form.
We have a first by Mike to table.
Second.
We have a second by Kevin. With the table action, there is no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
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 Opposed, a no. That motion carries unanimously. Item nine point one, one is tabled. Item 10 is approval of claims. Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns on the set of claims brought forward for tonight's meeting? Public or council?
Large claims, but I couldn't find anything bad.
Is there a motion in that, Mr. Bashan?
It is. Move to approve.
We got a first by Mike. We got a second by Aaron. Any last discussion? Count, council or public? We are paying bills, so we'll go ahead and roll call. Jason, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes.
I'm yes, Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Bills are paid. Item 10 is, 10.1 is, cause that's what we have there. Item 11 is public hearings. Um, 11.1 is, I guess, a comment on public hearings here. We've kind of made a concerted effort to try to get some of these done ahead of time, um, as we move forward. So we don't have to have special meetings or rush meetings with paperwork being done and things like that. So that's, I guess, prefaced with the information with all the public hearings or setting of public hearings. Mr. Cole, I'll turn it over to you for 11.1, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, for the past five years, we've been having Wednesday night's music on Main. Uh, each year they grow a little bit more. Um, we're proud of, uh, what we've done there. Uh, this year we're asking for music on Main, um, on each Wednesday through June through July 20th. We're asking a street closure and the lifting of the open container. Street closure will be Harley Davidson Way from Lozelle to Main and then Main Street all the way to Third Street this year. Uh, we're expanding, uh, with some, uh, with the, uh, money that you, uh, gave us in, uh, budget to buy a couple more, um, activities, uh, to do on Main Street. So we'll be expanding the activities down to Third Street. We will continue to not close that section of Main Street between, uh, Harley Davidson Way and Third Street, um, until, uh, after five o'clock when the bank closes.
Any questions for Jerry? On music on Main, street closures and lifting of open container ban? Public comments, questions, concern on this public hearing of upcoming events once we reach summer? It's pretty warm today.
Move to approve.
Right, we got a first by Jason to approve.
Second.
We have a second by Becca. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries unanimously. 11.2 is special events license for music on Main. Jerry, back to you, sir.
Uh, yes, each of those, uh, music on Main's would have a SEL, um, to serve, uh, drinks, uh, out of the plaza. And, uh, again, this year we drew them out of the hat and, uh, everybody, uh, gets at least two. Uh, some of them get three. Um, the Knuckle, the Loud and the Oasis.
Any questions for Jerry on the special event licenses? Public comments, questions, concerns, discussion?
Just a, just an observation. Will doing this clean the slate for the next six months?
That's, that's the, that's what we're hoping.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah. Is there a motion? Look, Jason was talking, I was talking. Do you have first, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Got a first by Jason.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries. 11.3 is also consideration to lift open container. This is both for the Sculpture Walk and then also the Art Festival, two separate events, two separate days. So back to you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, on June, Friday, June 3rd, um, the, uh, second annual art walk will take place. The Downtown Foundation, as you know, um, solicit, uh, art pieces, uh, from different sculptors and they, the ones that are there will be taken away and the, uh, new ones will be replaced. And then on Friday, June 3rd, um, the city and the Downtown Foundation, uh, will have unveiling, uh, along with the artist reception, uh, to meet the artist and have them speak a little bit in Rally Point. Uh, the open container, uh, we asked for that lift, um, on, on that day. And then the Saturday, June 4th is the Chamber of Commerce and my partner in crime.
Veronica just didn't brave the cold to come less than she gets to speak, so we appreciate you, Veronica.
Okay, on Friday, June 4th, as he mentioned, we have the Chamber's second annual Sturgis Art Festival. It will start at 10 a.m. and go all the way until 6 p.m. And it includes, um, I think on this agenda item, we're asking for the street closure. Yes. Yep, and that's just the same area as Music on, actually, not this year. It's where, it's on your map. It's the same area as Music on Main has been in the past. Um, so it's right in front of First Interstate Bank, but not blocking the drive-through. And then also along Harley Davidson Way between Main Street and Lozelle. And we are asking for a lift of the open container from those times in that area on that day.
Any questions from council concerning this two days of events? Is lifting the open container and closure of the streets in this action?
It's a fun time, folks. I'd suggest you go. I'm putting it in my calendar right now.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Move to approve.
We got a first by Mike to approve.
Second.
We got a second by Kevin and a third by Becca.
Yes.
Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion on 11.3, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries. Item 11.4 is the special events license for the art walk. So back to you, Jerry, pretty straightforward.
Yes, during the artist's reception, uh, we will have a, uh, SEL there. The Knuckle will provide, uh, drink as well as food for that, uh, uh, session for the artist. And, uh, so we'd like, uh, an SEL approved.
Questions, comments, concerns from council? Public? Is there a motion for the special event license?
Move to approve.
Got a first by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Angela. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries. Item 11.5, this is also something here in the future, but it's a community appreciation picnic. Um, we're gonna turn it back over to you, Veronica.
Yes, we are, again, the Chamber is hosting the community appreciation picnic on Wednesday, August 24th. Um, and it is in the evening and we would like to have the Loud American do an SEL at that event to serve alcohol as usual.
Any questions, comments, concerns from council or the public on the special event license? Are you motion?
So moved.
Got a first by Becca.
Second.
Second by Dean. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That special event license is granted. 11.6 is another Veronica. This is a SEL for the Chamber Egg Banquet, so back to you.
Thank you. The Chamber's Agriculture Committee puts on the Egg Appreciation Banquet every year in September or October. This year it's on, I wanna say Thursday, October 6th or 7th? And it's in the evening.
Six.
Six. Um, and we do have, again, the Loud American does the SEL for that event. It's inside the Armory and they set up their own bar and serve drinks and that's per usual as well.
Any questions on this SEL?
Motion to approve.
Got a first by Dean.
Second.
We have a second by Angela. Last chance for discussion, public or council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries. Brings us to 11.7. This is a special event license for Ducks Unlimited Banquet. I've got Fay down as a, for the report here. You must have all the information on a Fay is why.
Um, yes, they have, um, a, applied for an SEL, uh, for this Ducks Unlimited. This is something that they do every year. Uh, all paperwork was, uh, given to us and everything is, is in order.
Questions, comments, concerns about this SEL?
Is there a date on that?
March 22nd, six, March 26th for a date. Upcoming. It's been here before, yep, yep. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a first by Dean.
Second.
Got a second by Aaron. Any last discussion, public or council, on granting this special events license for Ducks Unlimited? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries. Eleven point eight is a street closure, a lifting of open container and a police escort request for the twenty-twenty-two Camaro Rally. Go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, this will be the eleventh annual, uh, Camaro Rally. Um, this request in front of you today, the Camaro Rally starts on Thursday, June twenty-third, runs through Sunday, uh, June twenty-sixth. But this request, uh, is for Saturday, June twenty-fifth. Uh, it is the day of the show and shine where we close the streets down and bring in all the Camaros, line them up along the streets and, um, advertise and bring in the public as well, uh, to enjoy all the cars. Um, is, along with this request, we are also asking for, uh, police escorts for Friday, June twenty-fourth. Um, for a parade at Fort Meade, uh, starting at the Thunderdome, uh, and into Fort Meade and back. Uh, a very short one, but very vital because it is on the, uh, crossing the highway. Uh, Saturday, June twenty-fifth, we're asking for, um, a parade route from the community center to the edge of town at city limits along Whitewood Service Road, uh, from the police to get, uh, all the Camaros down to Whitewood for their uh, big, uh, car show that they have the same day as we have. Um, in the past couple of years, we've had about eighty cars leave the community center. So uh, a police escort gets them out of town. So they're all together when they show up at Whitewood and make a big scene.
Questions for Jerry on this event and subsequent actions? Chief's okay with it, right? He's nodding his head, Jerry. You're okay. Questions, comments, concerns from the public or from council?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash seventeen for the Sturgis Camaro Rally.
Got a first by Becca.
Second.
Got a second by Aaron. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries. Eleven point nine is also a street closure and a lifting of open container. This is for the Community Appreciation Rally Picnic. And back to you, Veronica.
Uh, yes, thank you. The, we just approved the SEL. So now I am asking for the open container for the Community Appreciation Picnic on August twenty-fourth. And, um, the street closure will be only Harley Davidson Way from Main Street to Lozelle Street. I believe, if there's a map. Yep, there it is. Thank you.
That's where it's always been done in the past, yeah. Questions concerning these actions for the appreciation picnic in August?
I make the motion to approve.
Got a first by Aaron to approve.
Second.
Got a second by Dean. Any last discussion, public or council? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion two carries, also carries. Eleven point ten under public hearings is, thanks you guys. Makes it easier just at one meeting, right? Instead of a whole bunch. Eleven point ten is consideration to prove a transfer, uh, from an on-off malt beverage license and a wine license, uh, to Sturgis Stryker Bowling Alley. Now, that's, we had a typo there. So have you, Mr. Ainsley, down as a staff report, please?
Yes, uh, this is just transferring, um, the existing malt beverage and, uh, wine license from the existing owner to the, uh, new LLC. Uh, that will be acquiring, uh, the property at the end of this month. Uh, all the information has been provided.
Thanks, Daniel. Any questions on this transfer from council?
Uh, might be a legal question. I'm not sure. Uh, can we assign a beverage license to a patio? It's not, it's not, oh, Stryker.
This is the bowling alley, yep.
That's the next one.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a first by Aaron to approve.
Second.
Got a second by Kevin. Any last discussion on this public hearing from council or from the public? All those in favor of the transfer, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. Motion carries. Item twelve is reports. Twelve point one is the purchase of a very large straight truck with a plow for the airport. Welcome back, Dave, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening again. Uh, last month when I did my report, I told you I'd be coming back looking for some money. Uh, I did a lot of research, looked all over locally and all over the nation, the country to find not only a, a, a plow that would work for airport to help clear, uh, our expanse now, uh, better, faster, but something that was affordable and wasn't a total rusty piece of used up truck. Um, I found this one in, uh, Piattone, Illinois. Uh, so again, just a little bit of information of why, in the last five years, our airport has doubled in size with the amount of hangars and based aircraft. With this increase, also comes increased usage and the area that needs to, uh, to be cleared of snow. Currently, we have, uh, that Ford F-250, uh, with a snow plow and it works fine and an old Parks Department loader, which works fine. Uh, with these, with these units, it takes about eight hours to clear a whole runway. Uh, this is a much larger, larger plow and a larger unit. Uh, and I think it'll be a, a great asset for our, our airport. I did have a, uh, local mechanic in Piattone, Illinois, River Valley Truck Repair do a pre-buy inspection on it and you guys per, approved with the claims the, to pay for that. It was three hundred ninety-six dollars for them to go over and do an inspection at the site for us. There are a few small items, uh, that are easy to repair, cab light, clearance light, uh, turn signals, probably bulbs don't work. The one largest thing is that the, the rear brakes are gonna need to be replaced when we get it here. Uh, the price is thirty-five nine ninety-nine. And, um, I did talk to some local dealers and they couldn't find anything for me that was even close to this unit with, for this price. It does have a, a Cummins D, or Caterpillar diesel engine in it. And only eighty-two thousand, uh, miles on it, eight, just about eighty-three. Um, and the, the pre-buy was, was good. So uh, we got a thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand dollar CARES Act grant money that we get to spend. So I'm pretty much asking for an additional, uh, five thousand dollars to purchase the unit and, uh, have it delivered to us. It's gonna be twenty-two hundred dollars to ship it here.
Do you know what kind of plow it has?
Yeah, it's got a Western ten-foot straight blade. And that was part of the pre-buy inspection. They did check and make sure that works properly and everything is good.
You know, I was, I had an opportunity a couple of months ago. Dave took me out and we did a little bit of a tour of the airport, well, a big tour of the airport. And actually, I was the one that brought it up to him was we were looking at, you know, where we're at right now in terms of where we've grown to, you know, the new buildings that we're building, the growth that we're gonna be, you know, uh, into the future. And then I was looking at the equipment there. I said, geez, Dave, I'm not sure how you can, how you plow all this snow out because you, you don't have much out there. So, you know, from my perspective, uh, you definitely have a, a need for something a little bit larger that's gonna be able to push the snow around and particularly where we're sitting right now with the growth that you have coming up.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make a comment on that. So everyone is aware this is an item that goes above and beyond what was budgeted for the airport. And so the next time we do a supplemental appropriation, this is where, um, this sort of item will be brought up, that we will, um, ask for the council to proceed with a supplemental appropriation, probably of about thirty-six to thirty-eight thousand dollars to cover the purchase of this as well as the transport of that here. Again, we have a grant that's covering the vast majority of it. The remaining few thousand dollars that were short, hopefully we can find some additional, um, makeup room somewhere in the airport budget and if not, uh, using some, uh, some of our reserves for that. But uh, just to make sure everyone's aware that later on, there will be a supplemental for it. But um, the reason for that is when the budget was originally adopted, we did not know that we would be receiving the, these CARES Act funds that we would be able to use for the airport.
Also sell more fuel that you, that you can cover.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm doing everything I can. We, we actually, since I'm, my report last month and I'm happy to report, um, we gained an additional three aircraft at our airport. Um, and we got no place else to put planes right now until things get built. But so we're up there to eighty-five now.
I make a motion to approve.
We got a first by Aaron to approve the purchase.
Second.
We have a second by Dean and a third by Angela. Any last discussion, public or council? On this consideration? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, a no. Please note unanimous Fay on her roll call vote.
You got a garage for it, Dave?
Uh, yeah, actually, uh, we'll be, it will fit if we pull the mirrors in, into the air, the, the city section of the T-hanger, um, where we keep the lawn mowers and everything else, it will fit in there. But um, it, it also has a heater so we can plug it in outside because we've, we're gonna, we're gonna keep the pickup too. So we'll have all the units going. So we're hopefully cut everything in half. So maybe someday we'll build another garage for equipment storage. That'll be another, hey, I need money.
Don't come back next month, Smith.
No.
Stay close, Dave. Twelve point two, consideration of second reading of zoning amendment. Um, this is from G one to G, for GRB Enterprises. Back to you, Dave, on the staff report, please.
Okay, uh, and good evening again. Um, the item up for, uh, approval is the second reading of the zoning amendment uh, to rezone from Highway Service One to General Industrial One for GRB Enterprises. Uh, Mike Barak of GRB Enterprises, uh, doing business as Olson Towing, has submitted the zoning amendment, application for the property loaded, located at twenty-nine fifty-one Whitewood Service Road. The application requests to rezone the property from Highway Service One to General Industrial One zoning. The property is currently described as listed in the paperwork. Nothing has changed from the, uh, first reading of this. There's been no changes. Um, and again, the application has submitted, the applicant has submitted the application with the intent to apply for cannabis manufacturing, testing, cultivation licenses at this location. Uh, this will also, uh, bring the current use of the property into compliance with the zoning ordinance. And just so you know that, um, even though that is able to apply for those licenses, there's not always a guarantee that those licenses will be granted, just so you understand. So, and, uh, Mike is here still against tonight to answer any other questions that you might have that weren't asked or answered, uh, at our last, uh, reading, our first reading.
Questions, comments, concerns at this point from council? On this consideration of second reading for a zoning change?
You know, it's, it's bringing it into compliance, but there's really nothing that's forcing that compliance, correct? It's been out of the compliance, what, since twenty sixteen and since, even from, even as I understand, even from an insurance perspective, there was no requirement on their part to make that change.
Yeah, it, uh, the, the, the structures and, and the business, the all, we, we used to be Zilstr Towing and Zilstr Body Shop was built prior to me. So it would have been longer than twelve years ago and I wanna, I wanna say it was closer to twenty, uh, twenty years ago or better when Zilstr was built that. Uh, that's when the, that's when the zoning should have been taken care of at that time. Uh, it wasn't. So are we doing forced compliance for zoning? No. Um, have we had, received a complaint about compliance of, no. So the city's not forcing any compliance, uh, to change the zoning to correct.
I, I don't wanna speak for you, Dave, but correct me if I'm wrong, I guess I'm saying, basically at this point in time, the city, the city's aspect of what's going on out there is pre-existing non-conforming use. Is that a fair statement?
That, that would be correct, yes.
Any further discussion from council?
I mean, I guess I will just say, I don't see why we would even go through with this zoning amendment if it's been like that since twenty sixteen. Um, the property owner wasn't concerned about it all this time. The city wasn't concerned about it all this time. I mean, once we change the zoning, you can't go back and I, I mean, I just don't see the reason to change the zoning at this point.
Is there a motion in that or are you just making a statement? Further discussion at all from council or the public?
I mean, I can make a motion to deny that zoning amendment, the second reading.
We, we have a motion by Angela to deny the second reading of the zoning change. Is there a second?
I'll make that second for discussion.
We have a second on the floor to deny the second reading of the zoning change. You got more to add, Kevin? Go ahead.
We're on a slipper, slippery slope in, uh, adjusting zoning for the marijuana ordinances. Um, especially given the changes that are coming through our legislature here. You know, I understand trying to get into compliance. But, uh, you know, where we're doing this specifically for, you know, the use as a marijuana grow, I don't think we wanna slide down that slope just yet.
Especially when there's industrial, I'm still of the opinion there's industrial property available, correct?
I, I, go ahead, Daniel.
Mr. Bishan, there, there are properties that are currently available that would be for sale. Um, now with that being said, it would be up to the landowners if they are willing to sell them. But from the standpoint, there are properties that are available within the zoning where someone would be able to purchase and construct a, a grow operation that they would choose.
Thank you. I'd like to unwrap this a little bit more, which I don't know if that's a smart move or not, but I, I think part of the consideration that is at hand is, for clarity purposes, need to, needs to be understood, is the fact that the landowner said this was his intent to pursue manufacturing and the license that is, uh, that is possible through the city. Any action taken tonight on the zoning change would not directly approve that manufacturing license. It would make the zoning in a way that would be an easier process to achieve that license. But I just wanna make sure there's a point of clarity between the action of changing the zone and the proposed action of manufacturer request for a license. But we do have a first and a second on the floor to deny the second reading of the zoning change. Further discussion, council or public? Go ahead, Dave.
The, the, the current zoning in that triangle right now, it's zoned highway service. Everything to what would be the west of it is zoned to general industrial. Um, and then everything to the east is highway service.
So the creek was the, uh, previous boundary between industrial and highway service?
Yep, that would be correct, Kevin.
Mike, do you have anything to add, subtract? Come up to the microphone, please.
I guess the one thing I wanna add is, when I had pursued this, I mean, I could have just asked for a a rezoning and I even told you guys the truth. I could have just said I wanted it to be light industrial because it should be light industrial for what's going on out there currently. I mean, there's heavy truck use, there's, if I turn it back into a body shop, that's light industrial. So, I mean, I could have just went about it and said, I just wanted to change to light industrial. So I don't understand how it can even be highway use when it actually has So I don't understand how it can even be highway use when it actually has industrial work coming out of it. If you look up what zoning is for, for light industrial to heavy industrial, that is light industrial. That's, I mean, that's my point of view on the whole situation.
I'll say that would be my stance also, that, I mean, you're being upfront and honest about what you're doing, not trying to pull the wool over everybody's eyes on, on the situation. Very true that, yes, you can keep it as what it is. And it is true that he may not, you know, obtain a license. So matter of fact is, he's coming into compliance. We are doing the proper thing, I guess I would say.
You know, and the other thing is, is there's so many hoops to go over after this. This is, I should have probably never even said I was trying to do the cannabis because there is so much I have to jump through. I mean, so much. There's a lot to go after this if this were to get approved.
Mr. Mayor, well, I would just like to say that for me, the, um, the hook is the current use is non-conforming to its assigned zoning district, as towing facilities are only allowable within the general industrial zoning district. So we're bringing the zoning, or we're bringing into compliance what the property is now being used for. I think that's important that we do that. I think that, again, my comment from two weeks ago is his, you know, um, I'm sorry, that's my train of thought. Your possible cannabis business, to me, that is many steps from where we are right now. So I think it's important that you bring this property into compliance.
Any other discussion? I guess for clarity, Dave, put you on the spot here. With a pre-existing non-conforming use, there isn't a compliance, you're not sending him a letter monthly stating you're still the same way you were before. There, I mean, there isn't an outreach by the city to say, we have to change this zone because you're not in compliance.
No, that, that is correct. I mean, Mike and I have talked, uh, went after he bought the business about, uh, some complaints that I received, but we worked through those. But no, there's, there's been no, no letters of violation or, or requests to go through this process from my office.
We have a first and a second on the floor to deny the second reading of the zoning change. Bonnie, come on up to the microphone, please. I'll have to restate it. And yes, you can yell, I've heard it.
What I smell is a concern that changing this zoning in order for him to pursue the cannabis is an implication that the council supports that, and there's a lot of derision over cannabis growing and, and, you know, what's to come with the new legislation. But I think Becca's right on it. It has nothing to do with the cannabis, and it's not like it's an island in the middle of different zoning that he wants to change to. It's what he should be. And I think Becca nailed it, and, and the decision to change the zoning has nothing to do with approval, disapproval, support or not for future activities. And then I guess I wonder if it has to be for what he's pursuing, does that require a certain zoning? Is that going to require a certain zoning, and this is the zoning?
Correct.
And it's the zoning he should have anyway?
Correct.
Becca's on it.
Mr. Marshall, can I lean on you for any kind of, uh, guidance to help differentiate the action at hand and maybe future use and future requests for licenses in those hoops that Mike was referring to?
My initial response, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, is that there is no relationship between the two. The city and the council is not making any kind of commitment to grant a license. And it is consistent with the surrounding property uses. So I see no impediment to council action to approve, should the council choose to do so. No commitment for further action from the council because we don't know what we don't know, and the future is pretty much what we don't know. I apologize for being a little too folksy, but you don't know what tomorrow brings, and he, Mr. Brock may apply, may not apply. It would be consistent, though, with city policy to entertain a motion to allow the property to be zoned as it should properly be zoned.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Mike, it looks like you already said something.
Uh, I'm kind of on the fence. We wouldn't even be having this discussion had it not been related to the grow. Period. We wouldn't even be having the discussion. I don't know how the public's going to look at that. The city condoning a grow in the middle of town. With that, uh, I know what my constituents have told me. And I have no dog in the fight, so I am going to vote with my constituents. And I'll leave it at that.
Go ahead.
Well, I would just like to, um, make the point that when the surrounding property owners were contacted, the approval rate was sixty-six percent. And even though there was one that was not returned, that means implied consent, and that was nine percent. So you're looking at over seventy-five, almost seventy-six percent approval for this change coming from the surrounding property owners.
But Becca, that's where the formula, in my opinion, is wrong.
Perhaps, but that was the, that was the formula that we used at this time.
But the property owner that's requesting has sixty percent of the property to start with. So if it was new rules, it'd be a little different.
Forty-six point four-two is what it is, Mike, but your point's well taken. Any other discussion? We do have a first and a second to deny the second reading. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. So we keep going back to the cannabis, which obviously that's what I'm planning for because I was honest. You guys, we haven't even got to the point where the license goes forward, where I can show you what that facility, the revenue that's going to bring. I mean, Sturgis is all about revenue. It's all about getting, you know, moving forward, having money for the, the city, so on. You guys are going, some of them are going against it when there's not even numbers for me to, I can't show you that yet because I, we're not at that part of it. Does that make sense? I mean, that facility, what that could grow and what that could do, the numbers are large. I mean, so, you know, I didn't want to discuss that because we're not at that, because I'm here for zoning. I'm not here for cannabis yet, but that's something everybody needs to take in consideration. You know, that building is not in the center of town like it was just stated a little bit ago. It's on Whitewood Service Road. Up the street, you have the industrial park. The cannabis cannot be in the industrial park because there's other businesses too close around it. There's a lot of things through the state of South Dakota that the properties have to be. You know, one, the property owner that said, no, I don't know the gentleman, but I'm trying to do something with my property to generate money for Sturgis, for taxes and all that stuff, for roads, for bridges, all that stuff. So I just think that's something else we all need to take in consideration too. I'm not presenting numbers because I can't yet. So.
Thanks, Mike. And this is a tricky one because we do have to stay focused on the consideration at hand.
I'd like to, I'd like to see this tabled. It's too late for that.
Well, there's a motion to deny a first and a second on the floor.
I, I just don't feel comfortable voting on this at this point in time, just to give the kid the benefit of the doubt. But we'll, I guess we'll, we'll do it what we have to do.
Well, we have a first and a second on the floor. Are we ready to vote, or do we have any other last discussion?
Well, I could, but I'll call the vote.
You know, sit back and listen to this. You know, and I understand the emotions of the second part. But it does seem to me that, you know, right now, even though there's not a push to be in compliance, I don't know why it would hurt to be in compliance when it comes down to the zoning. I do see these as two separate issues, as Becca pointed out, and you pointed out, Mr. Mayor. Zoning, changing zoning doesn't necessarily, uh, communicate that that's going to be the location for marijuana growth. So, you know, again, just kind of stepping back and just kind of do what's, from my perspective, what's right. You know, if, if I didn't know anything about marijuana, I would say, no, let's don't it. It should be industrial and, uh, and just move forward with it. That's my take.
Thanks, Aaron.
Before we vote, I do have another question, and I don't mean to do this to be pointed. When you say a marijuana grow, is it hydroponics?
It's hydroponics, and it's, it's all in a rotisserie. It's, I mean, it's very advanced. I mean, that's why I'm saying, I, it's, it's at a bad stage because it should just be zoned light industrial. Then I could be here presenting to you what you guys want to see. I mean, I know what you want to see, and I have all that. I mean, I have everything ready to go, you know? So it's all hydroponics. It's, you know, everything has its own rooms, and it's got a filtration system, a ninety-eight percent no smell. I mean, it's, it's advanced. I mean, it's not like, uh, no, like a backyard situation by any means. I mean, this is a legitimate, if it was ever to get through, it's a legitimate grow. I mean.
Second question. What's the security requirements?
So security requirements are the whole, the whole yard has to be fenced in.
Let's back this up a little bit here. We, we got to stay focused on the zoning, yeah.
But I have all that. That's all in a packet. That's all through South Dakota.
So we got a first and a second on the floor to deny. I'm going to call the question here. Becca said she is ready to vote. Becca, what's your vote on denying the zoning change second reading?
So we're denying the vote? I vote no.
Dean?
I vote no.
Aaron?
No.
Jason?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Angela?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I have no also. Motion to deny the zoning change does not pass. Now procedurally, Mr. Marshall, yeah, there's an opportunity to have another motion on the floor.
I'll make that. I move to approve the second reading of zoning amendment for GRB Enterprises from Highway Service One to General Industrial One.
We have first by Becca to approve the second reading.
Second.
Second by Jason. Hate to do this, but any further discussion with the two motions on the floor? And it's hard to differentiate between the two for sure. It's a difficult things.
Uh, we're moving, um, I made the motion to approve the second reading of this zoning amendment for GRB Enterprises from Highway Service to General Industrial. Just following from when we approved first reading on February seventh.
Is that clear, Mike?
No, that's, I'm, I'm confused, but if nothing else, I'll abstain.
So was there a second here, Becca? Yeah, there was a second by Jason, yep, yep. Mike, you want any clarity? So we have first and a second on the floor to approve the second reading. Becca, we'll start with you again.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
No.
Mike?
I'm going to abstain.
And I'm yes, so.
Not understand this enough to say this is proper, so.
Understood. That motion carries for second reading. Once it's published in the official paper, twenty days later, it'll go into law. Item twelve point three, consideration of second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh five. This is animals. Thanks, you guys. Mr. Miller's been waiting patiently. Go ahead, Eric, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make sure the mic's on this time. I think everything's good. So, uh, the title, the revisions to Title thirty-two originated through kind of more of a change in the penalties and enforcements for ordinance violations. The goal is to decrease the violations to be lower than the general court schedule. And the effort is to try to, is trying to encourage payment of administrative citations rather than forcing the city to take people to court over ordinance violations. And I think the decreasing the prices also are more in line with kind of the offense in general. Uh, that creates, in addition to, is, creates an appeal system that allows for more due process with the administrative citations. Another revision is the, are the kennel definitions. The purpose is to try to clarify and narrow the scope of what is constituted kennel, and then also provide that more enforcement of the current provisions with the kind of licensing. But one of the biggest revisions was the addition of the urban chicken ordinance. And the purpose of that is to generally allow up to six chickens within city boundaries. And then the primary revisions from the first reading to this current version is the adding or essentially accepting removing the chickens from the calculations for the excess animal permits. So you can have six chickens plus six cats and, or six dogs and still be within the ordinance. And then the other revision is to limit or essentially disallow chickens on any multi-res, multifamily residents or any single family that's attached to another residence. The purpose is to limit it to areas where it's plenty of area to run, plus, uh, trying to minimize any noise or any odors to surrounding neighbors. Beyond that, I believe that's all the major changes. There's a couple little clerical or spelling corrections and formatting, but other than that, there's no significant changes.
Any questions from council for Eric? Aaron, go ahead.
No questions for Eric necessarily, just, uh, you know, again, just want to be able to voice some people's concerns on this, particularly with the chickens. You know, two questions kind of came up to me. One of them was health safety, and the other one was attracting predators. You know, I did reach out to one of the veterinarian clinics here in town and talk to a couple of the veterinarians and kind of, kind of get a judge from their perspective in terms of what that health risk is. They really felt with, you know, with what we have in the ordinance right now with only six of them, they thought it was a really, really, really low risk. They didn't necessarily see, um, anything significant when it comes down with this ordinance in terms of having poultry and chickens, where it's going to really create a situation where influenza, that area and influenza and some of those other type of things. So I, I feel pretty comfortable with that, you know, and I just want to be able to voice that out there because I know there's people that have had those concerns. On attracting predators, uh, you know, I know I talked a little bit with Chief before the meeting started. I know he met with, or he kind of communicated with some of the other communities that- before the meeting started. I know he met with, or he kind of communicated with some of the other communities that have, uh, this policy in place. So Chief, if you would take just a few moments, just kind of summarize kind of what you, what you heard in terms of any issues concerned, particularly when it comes down attracting predators.
So yes, I did with, when this was proposed, I reached out to, uh, the chiefs throughout South Dakota, asking them if they had the ordinance or if they did not. And if they did have the ordinance, what problems they were having, whether there was smell issues, um, chickens getting out, and I believe, uh, wildlife predators coming in after them. And overall, the, uh, to the best of my knowledge, I don't have all my notes on me, but, uh, the numbers were low um, as far as any major issues, which was really surprising for me. Even Sioux Falls, I believe Sioux Falls has chicken ordinance. It's very similar to this one, if I remember correctly, and very few issues have come up, so. There's some other places that have done trial runs and decided not to for whatever reason, but, uh, um, I believe Rapid has talked about this for some time, and as of, uh, recent, they do not allow chickens in town, but overall, it seems like the, some of the major concerns were very minimized after they did enact the ordinance, which was, was actually surprising, so.
Hey, thanks, Chief, for that update. Appreciate it.
Does lot size have anything to do with it, Eric? Property size?
I don't believe there's any specific property size, but there are very specific requirements on setbacks, where the chicken coops, what sort of enclosure needs to be in place, what sort of, uh, cleanliness, sanitary conditions, what, and I think with those specific requirements, and it can only be on, essentially either a vacant lot or uh, single-family detached residence, so that limits the specific locations. And if, if it's a really narrow lot and it doesn't meet the setback requirements, then can't have chickens. So I think the specificity of the ordinance and the requirements limits the, to certain properties on who can generally have chickens.
Thank you.
I'm just making some clarification here. Uh, so if, uh, say rented property that would come to the landowner, correct, would make that choice, I guess, whether chickens could be approved on the, on the property, correct?
I mean, that would be between the renter and landowner.
I just wanted, okay.
Because you, generally, one of the aspects of the chicken ordinance is that whoever, whether it be the keeper, such as the renter or the landowner, have to essentially register the chickens with the animal control. That way, the animal control knows who to contact if there are any complaints or anything of that sort, and to just do a quick review on whether or not they're meeting the requirements of the ordinance. So ultimately, that's decision between the landowners, because obviously a renter can put something in their lease or prevent people from having chickens. That's their own prerogative.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, public or council? On second reading of animals, Title thirty-two. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of Title thirty-two.
Got a first by Angela?
Second.
We have a second by Becca. Last chance for discussion. Public or council. This is second reading of an ordinance, so we'll go ahead and roll call. Start with myself. I'm yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
Second reading passes of Title thirty-two. Item twelve point four is Title sixteen. This is traffic. This is first reading after discussion last meeting, so back to you, Eric, please.
The majority of the changes or proposed revisions for the Title sixteen traffic are generally clerical and just creating or resolving some of the outdated provisions and updating statutes and updating cross-references and just language in general to mirror this, many of the statutes. However, at the last council meeting, it was discussion brought up that the parking on Main Street became a concern be from, like, long pickups parking on Main Street and essentially narrowing the traffic to one-way. So in response to that, I put together, uh, section sixteen oh five oh four within the parking chapter of sixteen point oh five that addresses Main Street parking. Uh, the language that's proposed is all vehicles parking along Main Street between Fourth Street and Middle Street must not protrude or extend past the end of the parking lines into the right-of-way. Uh, generally, any violation of this would be subject to the parking violation fees, which are recommended to be amended to twenty-five dollars. The ultimate purpose of this is trying to create more of a bright line rule for if somebody's in violation or not. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I spent a little bit of time over the weekend looking at the, uh, parking situation. I mean, I, once in a while, it was a little tight. Looks like there's an awful lot of vehicles that would be in violation of this. I mean, uh, not just long pickups. Uh, you know, full-size Chevy Suburbans were too long vans, normal four-door pickups with short boxes. Doesn't seem like we're sending a, a real inviting Main Street experience if we're gonna be handing out twenty-five dollar tickets to everybody parked on Main Street. You know, I understand that it's a little bit of a, of a pinch at times. I don't know if, uh, if setting an ordinance, though, that sets a, uh, a fee for non-compliance and, and, and that's before we even start discussing how we're going to communicate this. You know, how many signs are gonna be put up downtown and all those sorts of things. And I think there has to be a better way. You know, if we decide to move on this tonight, it would seem to me that we'd just strike that, but if, you know, I would be in support of further discussion as well if there's some other. At one point in my life, you know, in all the years here, Main Street was one way, and I'm not condoning that as, you know, as a solution, but, you know, there was a time that Main Street was, was one way. I've heard that, uh, that it's possible that the street is actually narrower since Reconstruction. I don't know. I don't know that to be true or, or not, but, uh, when it looks like fifty percent of the vehicles won't fit on our Main Street as far as parking, it looks like we've got a problem. You know, bringing this ordinance forward.
So just to address one of the items you brought up, the curbs are the same, uh, place post-construction as what they were previous, um, construction. In addition, when the, uh, the parking, uh, was marked, the angle, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the, the degree, but it was actually increased, which removed a couple of the parking spaces, but it was increased so that there was more space for vehicles to park, even though, like you said, several vehicles still can't fit within that space, but we tried to make it so that there was even more space available for vehicles to park. But by doing that, we did lose a few parking spaces.
Um, I do feel that, uh, limiting the length, uh, and having a twenty-five dollar ticket, I, I'm not really for that at all. Um, we have a status all around us, and you have people coming in town and usually about a four-door long box is pretty standard out in the country anymore, and there, I don't want to drive anybody away from coming to Main Street. And majority of them, and I see it all the time, is somebody will, they'll pull their front tire up onto the curb to be courteous to try to shorten up the length of their vehicle on the street, I guess, too.
Thanks, Jason.
Well, it's kind of a slippery slope. I'm still, I'll throw out a couple of options. I, uh, I can't agree with Kevin to, to, uh, kick about fifty percent of our business out of town because of the egg pickup or the hunting class pickup, there's four doors in a regular box or four doors in a long box. Doesn't seem like good, good sense to me. So I'll entertain, uh, I heard the developers talk about parking on one side of the street. So we got a couple of options out there. We can look at one-side parking only, and then they can park however they want, or we can make it a one-way street with herringbone both the same direction on both sides. That should open up about fourteen feet in the middle for one-way traffic. Uh, I think we do have to do something, though, before we have a serious accident. It's hard to see around those, thank God for rearview cameras, because I can see around my headrests in the backseat of my pickup what's coming. Those long vehicles, you can't see unless you're just about halfway out of your parking spot. We're gonna have an issue, so we have to come up with a viable solution, and we have plenty of options. I don't know what the solution is right now, but I'll tell you, we're sure gonna make a lot of people mad when we start doling out twenty-five dollar tickets.
Well, the fact is, you know, trucks are just getting bigger. All vehicles are getting bigger, you know, those limitations that we have, and like what you and Jason just talked about. Ultimately, we're a truck agriculture, you know, society here, particularly in western South Dakota. We don't, don't want to necessarily limit those people, those vehicles going down Main Street, so.
It's not so much agriculture.
If it's a problem, if there's a problem, and as you kind of point out, Mike, we probably should look at a different solution. But, uh, banning or, you know, creating situations where we're gonna be giving people fees for these larger pickups, probably not the right option.
I mean, I, I can name a half a dozen people right off now that are town people with large families, and if they want to go in any type of off-road type environment, they're gonna have four, four-door pickups and, uh, a room for, uh, dog kennels in the back or the canoes or the boats or whatever else. But the common vehicle is gonna be a four-door pickup real soon.
Mr. Mayor, would this be something appropriate for the Infrastructure Committee to take a look at? And look at some options and maybe some of the pros and cons of those options, or, or is there a different approach?
I think it makes sense for that. Our consideration tonight is a first reading. As council, we have the right to table it and have further discussion and further committees. We have the right to pass it minus or adding language.
Yeah, and you could, if we, you know, with this particular ordinance, if we were to, as I think Kevin pointed out, strike that portion of where you're gonna get fined for having large vehicles on Main Street and still continue to go forward with the, with this ordinance, it would just be looking at, what's the solution for Main Street, uh, going forward? That's probably above and beyond what the ordinance is right now. It'd be something looking at some of the options that Mike just considered.
And it might.
Could, we could go forward with the ordinance if we decide to, with addition, with some edits.
It might give us an opportunity to educate the, the public on this, too. Uh, you know, good faith, a good faith effort to get people to park it, so we got to designate someplace for parking that's close to Main Street, so people will go to the stores, the restaurants and everything else. Pretty soon, though, I have seen short campers on Main Street parked literally to the center line, and that'll be coming here again pretty soon.
Well, as Kevin pointed out, you know, there was a time where we were a one-way street, and there's a reason we went away from a one-way street. I don't know what those reasons are, but the environment continues to change, right? In terms of what kind of vehicles we have and, and just all those kind of factors that play into it. So the environment's different, so we probably need to take a look at, you know, what our options are to, to, uh, kind of deal with it.
I feel it'll be a continuous battle with Sturgis being in the middle of tourism, people from all over the nation coming here, and here we are, limiting our Main Street to a certain size of vehicle.
Any further discussion? Or is there a motion?
I would move to approve for first reading Title sixteen traffic to include the removal of section sixteen point zero five point zero four in regards to Main Street parking.
So we have a first by Becca striking the additional language of sixteen point zero five point zero four, if I remember right.
Sixteen point what?
Zero five zero four.
That's correct.
Yes. And I'm sorry, Mayor, may I also add, for the parking issue, to move to Infrastructure Committee.
So first by Becca?
Second.
For the second by Jason, was that who that was?
Yes.
Bonnie, what do you have for discussion? Come on up.
National Traffic Safety Board is probably the federal agency that helps give us guidelines on lane widths, parking angles, things like that. Like Daniel stated, that when we did reconstruct Main Street, there was avid discussion on that, and the choice was kind of made to make the angle larger so that we would have longer length for parking, and we gave up a couple of spots because of that. That all came from parameters from the federal agency. Um, Rick deals with them quite consistently. Has to do with the collector streets and things like that, and what merits a stop sign and all that good stuff, but to answer your question, yes, there is an agency that gives us guidelines and guidance in that area. We followed those to the degree of getting what we have now. Still face a problem, without a doubt.
Correct.
I'd like to thank Eric, Eric for good face, good effort, though. Thank you.
He, he listened to it.
Thank you.
So we got a first and a second on the floor to pass first reading of this ordinance, uh, minus the Main Street parking with the direction of infrastructure as a discussion point on that item. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes. Opposed, a no. That motion carries unanimous. Fay, for a roll call vote, please. Item twelve point five, this is a preliminary plan review for Harvest Meadows. Uh, this is a subdivision. Dave Smith is coming back up. Thanks, Eric.
Good evening again. The item before you is, uh, a preliminary plan review. This is something that's required by ordinance for new subdivisions, uh, to come and let you, as the council and planning and zoning that looked at this already, know what's going on. Uh, this review is for Harvest Meadow Estates and the Valley View subdivision. Uh, Pivot Development Group has submitted this preliminary project plan for phases one and two of Harvest Meadow Estates and phase one of Valley View subdivision. The approximate location is the legal description in your packet. Uh, this lies along Avalanche Road north of I ninety. The purpose of the planned development request is to create a new housing options ranging from multifamily, townhome and single-family lots. The developer is the owner of the property along the Avalanche Road corridor and has submitted the plan with the goal to create these new residential subdivisions within the city of Sturgis. Two subdivisions again are proposed as Harvest Meadow Estates and Valley View. Harvest Meadow Estates is, will be a mixed-use development with the first phase of the proposal, including three multifamily lots with options for incorporated rental storage units for these, uh, uh, units, sixteen townhome lots and thirteen single-family lots. The requested zoning is residential with a planned use or PUD development designation to allow for some variances to the current city ordinances, to allow for storage units and modified street widths and reductions to the minimum sizes and widths of the lots. The sanitary water and stormwater systems were designed by a South Dakota registered professional engineer and have been designed to meet requirements of the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources and the city of Sturgis ordinances. The street plan currently includes twenty-six-foot wide paved streets with curb gutter, five-foot sidewalk on both sides. Parking would be limited to one side of the street, and currently, this portion of the property is within city limits and is vacant agriculture. And currently, this portion of the property is within city limits and is vacant agriculture. Future phases of the proposed, the proposed development would include larger housing units and lots to the north. The Valley View subdivision located on the west side of Avalanche Road and north of Alder Place will be designated to create single-family workforce housing. The current proposal is forty-nine lots. Similar variances are requested with the PUD zoning designation, including reductions in street width, lot widths and frontages. The street plan would be similar to Harvest Meadow Estates, twenty-six-foot wide streets, curb gutter, five-foot sidewalk and on-street parking restrictions. The property is currently outside of the city limits and is vacant agriculture. Additional lots similar in nature are proposed for future phases of the subdivision. The attached documentation includes original letters of intent from the developer as well as project plans for Harvest Meadow Estates, Valley View subdivision, including site plans, utility plans and phasing plans of both subdivisions, as you can see up on the screen. This is a preliminary version of this proposal. Uh, city staff is currently working with the developer on finalizing details on several items, including street traffic plan uh, for the future of Avalanche Road, the placement and sizing of water and sewer utilities and the overall stormwater drainage plan for the development. Additional administrative actions would be required within the development plan, including voluntary annexation and rezoning of some properties. The version that you see before you of the proposal incorporates minor changes that were in response to discussion that was held at the February 8th Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted to recommend to submit the preliminary project plan for city council review with those minor changes. And I believe there is a member of the development, Pivot Development here to answer any questions if you have any that I can't answer.
I'm sorry, Bonnie, I can't hear you.
Could you orient me to where this is located? I couldn't get that up down.
Do you know where, where you go to the dump?
Yeah.
So on that.
I didn't go up right.
On Avalanche Road.
Bonnie, it's right where the little, the little hut is for the motorcycle campground.
Before you go around the corner?
Before you go around the corner.
Before you go around the corner on the right and then after you go around the corner on the left.
Right. Two different.
There's two, there's two, yes.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments. You know, just for the counselor's awareness, you know, this is one of the projects we've been looking at in the Infrastructure Committee. You know, I've met with the developers. Overall, great project. I mean, ultimately, you know, just a couple of days ago, we had, I think, four houses in Sturgis that was under three hundred fifty thousand, you know, for sale. So if you supply and demand, we don't have enough supply for all the demand that we have. And so this is one of the options. Now, some of the things we have to work is the, is the infrastructure. You know, get that in place. We did look at some short-term solutions, some long-term solutions. And ultimately, those solutions were only months apart from each other. And so we're kind of looking at the long-term solution as putting the infrastructure on that north side of the creek to be able to, particularly for the sewage main, to be able to service, you know, this addition as it continues to grow. So, uh, for any of the counselors that are on the Infrastructure Committee, if you want more information, you want, you know, I'll visit with you. It's one of the things that we talk at each of the projects. This is one of our time-sensitive ones because ultimately trying to get the infrastructure in place to be able to support the construction of this sometime. And, you know, hopefully, you know, people living in those homes sometime in, uh, you know, late summer, fall of 2023. So it looks good. As Dan could probably tell you, there's probably some money that could come along with this too, from some funding, uh, to support that infrastructure piece of it. So it looks like things are moving, from our perspective, at least from my perspective as the Chair of the Committee, going well in terms of trying to make this a reality.
Thanks, Aaron.
I applaud the effort of Kyle and the, the other developers. But I want everybody to remember, most people are enjoying living on a piece of property in the city of Sturgis that's fifty by a hundred and fifty. For, for a hundred and fifty years, it's been seventy-five hundred square feet per lot with an alley. And now we're going to less than six thousand or less with no alley and damn little on-street parking. So when you, when you start driving through these and you got young families, they got really no backyard much to play in. And of course, there'll surely be some playgrounds in these new developments. But when I drive through Dolan Creek and I see campers, pole campers with a boat hooked behind them, waiting for Saturday to come around so they can hook a pickup up to it and go camping, it's an electricity to look at. I mean, you gotta stop, you gotta let traffic go by. And now with this plan, we're gonna put parking on one side. That's the proposal. I sure the hell don't want my neighbors across the street parking all their cars in front of my house. And you're gonna, we're gonna have those issues with one side of the street parking only. These are things that need to be brought up in infrastructure before we go as far as to begin to approve these type of plans. I listened and watched the planning and zoning meeting three times. And planning and zoning did not raise any questions other than the street width. These are planned developments and they're looking for all kinds of variances to make money. And in the long run, I'm not sure we're doing the best thing we can do for our families, for our future families to move into such small economical places. They're still gonna spend three hundred thousand dollars and they have to rent a storage container, a storage area to put their stuff in because they can't put it anywhere else. So that, that's a real bug to me that, you know, we're gonna provide rental areas or rental lockers for the people. I, I don't know, I just got a problem with the small lots, narrow streets. Streets are meant to be forty feet wide from gutter to gutter. That gives you two twelve-lane passing. It gives room for kids to play in the street, play ball, and it gives plenty of room for parking. And I sure the hell wouldn't buy one of these, but I can afford to live somewhere else. What's gonna happen is we're gonna have upset people in the long run. And I think we're already seeing that in Dolan Creek. Am I wrong or not?
We can do that, let's take a, Dolan Creek and kind of see how that looks. But, you know, and Mike's on the Infrastructure Committee, so we've had this discussion before. And, you know, my heart's in the same place. I like having wider streets, that's, I kind of grew up also. But I would tell you, there's also pros and cons to both having wider and narrow streets. You know, you can talk to, uh, on the public works in terms of snow cleaning and all that type of stuff. The more, the wider the streets are, the more snow that you have to remove and then they have to more offset. So there's some second, third order effect sometimes, but, but we're gonna take a look at them.
Well, along with that, I'm gonna make another comment. I live on the corner of Fifth and Main Street. I have a sidewalk from curb to my yard is five feet. I have a, I believe it's a thirty-six-foot street. And not one time does Rick Bush or his boys ever roll any snow up on my sidewalk. Not one time in almost ten years now. So what I'm saying is, I'd rather have, for me, I'd rather have the wider streets and a little bigger lot if they're gonna be less than six thousand. I mean, you figure out what six thousand square feet is.
Yeah, and the key thing that Mike's bringing up too is that there's some variances there within this plan that we need to take a look at. So it's, it's, so it's, you know, exception to policy. So we definitely gotta take a look at them.
Procedurally, by ordinance, this preliminary plan has to be brought forward. Action-wise, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts that still exist as this plan develops and the developers look at creating what they're building out there. Mr. Marshall, do we, it's intended action by ordinance to either accept or deny this preliminary plan? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe it is.
For clarity, as we move down the road with the acceptance, accepting, if this plan was to be accepted, there's still the need to have the actual planned urban development plan passed, which would consist of, this is our plan on the streets. This is what we're dealing with, with off-street parking, things like that. So there's further action that infrastructure can help develop that is more, you know, something that is more feasible to move forward with as far as a full council support.
Digging a deeper hole, Mark. The longer we go with it, the more planning they get done, the more money they spend. The, I mean, all the way from the, from the sewer pipes to the water lines, the storage facilities, everything else. I was very disappointed in planning and zoning. I'll be, I wanna be on the record with that. This was not nearly explored far enough or deep enough. And I think that we need to do a better job of what we do. Now, if the whole goal is to put four hundred homes out there with affordable housing, I don't know how Rick Bush is gonna plow the yard, plow the streets. I mean, there's gonna be, quote, I read it, I heard it three times, when I listened to it three times. On-street parking restrictions for snow removal. Where in the hell are those people gonna park their cars? What, so the snowplows can come through? I mean, there's all kinds of issues to explore here that haven't been touched. And before I approve a plan, I wanna know where we're gonna park them, where the kids are gonna play. Uh, the whole deal. Streets are a big concern of mine. If they're not wide enough, we're gonna have an accident, we're gonna get a kid ran over from running out between cars parked on one side of the street. Anyway, I can go on and on and on with that, but I'm just one vote.
I can say that I agree with Mike. So I'll pretty much echo everything that he said. Is there a reason, if they have room to do storage, then why couldn't the lots just be bigger to give the people more space to store stuff on their own properties? I mean, why are the lots so small if they have space?
I look at it as you're keeping somebody from having their side-by-side parked in their garage to keep a vehicle from being in their garage. So you have that extra little bit of space to be able to put your stuff that would maybe normally sit outside and be nice or that you don't necessarily have. That's what your idea of a storage unit is for, is to be able to store your stuff and keep it nice, rather than it just sitting out. You got a brand-new neighborhood, nice area and I don't wanna sit there and look at everybody's junk sitting outside.
Are they gonna have garages?
Right.
All, all these homes will, will, are gonna have minimum of two stall garages, some three. They'll have off-street parking, uh, more than the minimum requirements of four hundred square feet in front between there and the sidewalk and the, and the homes. There'll be ample room and the backyards are not, they're gonna be about the same size approximately as Dolan Creek, which is not a small postage stamp. They're, they're a nice-sized yard. I like mine smaller because I don't wanna have to mow anymore.
And that's exactly where I was gonna go with this was I look at it as this is a starter home for somebody to go in, get, you know, make their down payments and everything and then move up to their bigger lot house that they want sometime down, down the road. Chasing kids between ball fields and whatever else that you gotta do, having time to try and mow your yard and everything. Somebody may look at that as, that's nice to have a small yard and not have to worry about it, less maintenance. It's, there's a lot of pluses to having stuff confined and close there. They're not having to run all the way across town to a storage unit that is someplace else with all their stuff on it. Cause maybe they'll just say, well, I'm just gonna park it out front here rather than putting it in the storage unit.
I would see that as better as a fifty-five-plus community type thing with the houses that close together than for families with lots of children, but.
Well, it comes down to cost too, right? You know, the bigger the lot, the bigger the house, the more amenities, the more it costs. And then pretty soon, as he kind of points out, now I can't afford to buy that.
But aren't we talking rental storage units? That's what it states in the plan, which would be a commercial. So would it be open to the public or is it just for the residents in this division?
Bill Phillips, members of the council, Mayor. I'm one of the partners on this project here. And just to clarify some of the storage unit stuff, we've got those three lots of somewhat multifamily. So we've got a lot of apartment housing and we wanna offer them a place to park, store stuff, but not just restricted to that. So one of those areas would be designated for garages or storage, so.
For the residents?
Yes, some for the residents and some just, I mean, there's a lot of housing going on there. So having some, some storage areas, that's what we'd like to do as well.
So it'd be for the public rental, okay? All right, well, um, thank you for that answer. I guess, um, if I may continue, I have a couple of questions. They mainly relate to the planned unit development. I don't see in ordinance where we need to do the preview approval. I see the development agreement that needs to come before council. And so to me, these are two different, um, things. I, I appreciate us getting the information right now, but I believe that there's a lot of questions as far as infrastructure, roads, that I would like to see included. I would like to see us, um, kind of beginning to get a general idea of what, what that is going to look like. I also, going back to the commercial uses, if you go to our ordinance Title 1869, under commercial uses allowed in a planned unit development, it would have to be a variance to allow, um, public rental storage units. You can find in there food markets, drugstores, fountains, bakeries, banks, barber shops, gift shop, gift shops, shoe repair. Um, I don't see anything really that even allows a variance to be done unless it's a completely new, um, category. So it'd have to be, I don't know, accessory buildings? Or would it be like number fourteen variance, um, public rental storage unit? I don't know. So that's a question I would like to have answered. Um, and then when you continue on through Title 18, you get to Section 7D. And it states, "The proposed development must be designed to produce an environment of stable and desirable character, not out of harmony with its surrounding neighborhood, and must provide standards of open space and areas for parking, adequate for the occupancy proposed." Can you show me on here where the open spaces will be for this first phase? Because when I think of open spaces, I'm thinking of what we had similar to Mark Hott's. A park, perhaps sidewalks, trails, that kind of thing. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not seeing on here where, where that will be included because it is in our ordinance. And if those don't happen, then we, would that be the recreation waiver sort of thing from them? Um, again, just a question that, that I'd like to have answered. And, and my third point is street width. I have a concern about a twenty-six-foot, um, width for streets. I believe thirty-six feet is the usual width that we require. I mean, we just got done talking for fifteen minutes on Main Street parking, street width, the concern we have here. My concern is, are we shortchanging these families that will be moving into this, um, subdivision, this development by, by saying yes? Let's cut off ten feet of the street and have you park on one side, you know, knowing that that has been a concern in other areas of town. And, you know, I see in this plan, it says, "Future phases of the proposed development, including additional larger housing lots to the north." Are we going to give them twenty-six feet as well? Or are they going to have, because they're larger lots, hence more expensive, will they get the full street width? And so are we kind of, I guess in my mind, discriminating against those families that are buying their first home or retirees or something? I just don't wanna see us shortchange our future citizens or any citizens that are going to be moving into this development by, um, shortening, shortening this, the street. And my final concerns have to do, um, with noise up there with the campground located next to it. Again, future citizens. I just think that for me, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before we pass this preliminary plan, especially if, if the prelim plan is. especially if, if the prelim plan is not required, it's just the development agreement. Thank you.
Did you, did you have some specific questions there that you want me to address, like the green space?
Yes.
So this is just a, a phase one of a lot of ground here. And throughout that, you know, we'll be coming forward with, with different things with the roads. There's a lot of natural drainages that we're going to incorporate going forward. But again, a lot of that's not here. This is probably a, you know, a ten, fifteen-year project. I mean, it's all about a hundred and thirty-five acres of land in total. This is just kind of phase one to try and address some of the needs of the community today. So we don't really have any places for parks and green space other than the current building ordinance is kind of designate some of that. So with our multifamily, for however, we can, we have to allow so much green space per structure size. And Mike's one question about lot sizes. Yeah, they're going to go to sixty feet is what we're asking on the affordable side of it. But a lot of these lots are a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty feet deep. So they're going to have plenty of backyard space, still have garage space. And the setbacks are still eight feet. So the dimensions, we're not really going any further to the side. There'll still be utility and drainage easements, just looking for, you know, a little, a little less frontage on them, so.
I'll have to read it again, Bill, but the, uh, everything I read was six thousand square foot lots. And when I look at Dolan Creek, you got people almost pulling, putting their fifth-wheel campers between the houses and there isn't five feet left between them, so.
Well, and technically all over town, you can go eight feet to your side setback. So putting campers there is, I mean, it's going to be tight no matter where you are.
They're too small for my, I mean, I, I have an issue with the size.
And I get that. I mean, I'd love to give everybody a fifteen thousand square foot lot and a forty-foot-wide street in front of their house, but it's not going to be affordable. I mean, we just finished Davenport and we know what we have into those lots. And they're all seventy to eighty-five-foot frontages. And it's expensive and those streets were a little bit wider and they're expensive. I mean, not saying we can't try and accommodate that, but that's making it that much more difficult to provide housing.
Well, my concern is that we get housing developments that are starting to look like trailer house lots. You just look down, of course, there'll be different colors and a little bit different foyer designs. But pretty soon you just line up twenty or thirty of them. And I don't know how, I don't know how people can find that appealing, but I guess they do, if they can afford to, to move in. Anyway, I think we could do better than cookie cutter type developments, I guess. I, I kind of put it that way. I'm not in the kitty, into, I'm not going to put the city in a situation where we're doing cookie cutter developments.
To address a couple of the concerns that were brought up, I think it's important to kind of note the different, um, phases that are being brought up. As far as the six thousand square foot lots, that would be the typical on the Valley View section. So that's kind of the blue section here. That's not on the, the pink section. That's the Harvest Meadows. On the Harvest Meadows, on the south side, those are townhome lots. Um, and then on the north, those are single-family lots that are more than six thousand square feet. So there is a difference between them.
In the packet, and I know it was an error, I don't know who's error, but there's two letters. The one I'm reading here is Valley View subdivision. And it's got all the little particulars in it.
Yes, and so that's the, the blue section here.
There was no addition, there was two of these in the packet, not one for the Valley View.
The, the, the Harvest Meadows, I don't believe that there's actually any exceptions to our regular zoning ordinance. And so there's no variances that are being requested for the PUD. That's only in the Valley View section, so only in the blue section. In the green section, there is that slight modification or request, and that is on the storage units. And that would be so that portions of those could be rented out if there's additional ones to individuals who don't necessarily live there. And so that's, you know, up to the council prerogative if you would authorize that or not. On the blue one, that is a possibility that if you want to say, you know, not let there be a variance as far as lot size and road width, things like that. But what does start to happen at that is the price points of homes start to increase. And that's kind of been one of the council's priorities is to make sure that there's a, a wide variety of housing that's being constructed, not just all at higher price points. But I think those are the, the policy choices the council has to start making.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you repeat? So Harvest Meadow.
Yeah, Harvest Meadow is a pink one.
Will have the rental storage units. And Valley View is the single-family current proposed forty-nine lots.
The, the har, I'm sorry, Harvest Meadows, phase one, I think that's what that's referring to. That's the green portion down here. So the green as well as the pink is called Harvest Meadows, just to make it more difficult to understand.
All right.
So the, the larger multifamily lots here is where they would be having multifamily as well as some, um, storage units.
But it'd all still be a PUD?
Yes.
So the variance would have to be for the commercial, for the storage units, correct?
Yes, if the council authorizes that.
How many what, Bonnie?
All right, these would be larger apartment buildings. I, I don't know what the exact plan of that's done.
We don't, we don't have a design on that yet, but, you know, lot one, two, and three are all approximately two and a half acres each, which would probably accommodate multiple, you know, fifteen to twenty-unit buildings. So with that many residents, that's why some of those, our intention is to do some garage areas along with some storage, just so people have a place to go with stuff. And our intention is, is to try and match it and make it look aesthetically appealing so we don't just look like an industrial, you know, storage unit facility in the middle of a housing development. That's not our intention. We just want to keep, keep the neighborhood clean and give an option of a place to put, put items. So that's, that's why we're looking at the multifamily and the, the storage facility, so.
The, according to our zoning ordinance, it would be able, without a PUD, to still be able to place, um, garage or storage units on there and lease them out to the residents of the multifamily. What they're asking for is if they build, I don't know, a hundred of these units, and if eighty are leased out to the occupants of the apartments, then the remaining twenty, I don't know if that math works, but the remaining ones would be able to be leased out to members of the public. I don't think the intention is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, to have a, a large area of storage units that you're trying to
No.
lease to everyone kind of in this corner of the city. It's more for the residents there. And so without the PUD, they could still build it. It would just be solely available for rent for people who occupy the apartments.
One of the questions I didn't get answered by listening to the planning and zoning is, what are multiple family units? Is that multi-story apartment buildings? Or is that three townhouses put together or what is it?
No, the, the area in red there would be kind of, yeah, that side would be townhomes is what we're looking at doing. And then the multifamily would be probably two to three-story fifteen, sixteen-plex units.
More like the Sierra Vista?
Or like the, the, the buildings along Ball Park Road, the newer facilities there, those two-story sixteen-plexes. Something along those lines.
Where are the small lots at? I'm, as I look through that, the smallest lot I see is sixty-two hundred seventy square feet. So, I mean, is there something smaller that I've?
Well, and I don't even, which one are you looking at that's that small? Because the majority of them are.
Yeah, sixty-six hundred is mostly in the Valley View side and, uh, you know, the other side, the Harvest side, sixty-two seventy on the, uh, so I'm not.
I think these here, counselor, would be the smallest ones as well as some of these that are up here, like eleven through seventeen on the Valley View. But they're around six thousand would be the, the smaller ones. But there's still, if you look on the south side, these are actually pretty large lots if you look at how deep they are.
What do you have, Bonnie?
I'm trying to tell between the pink at the right or the tan, whatever that is, the, the little lots on the lower side. The here don't look much different than the little lots in the blues though. And I go, but the small lots on the lower side.
Those, those are the townhouses is what they perceive there.
Two of these together would have one building on. Yes, so let me blow this up, Bonnie. So, right here, when you see fourteen A and fourteen B, right here, these two right here. These two lots together would have one building on. There's a lot line in between them, so they're truly two separate homes, but that way there's not the side setback between the two homes. So you save the, um, the width of those side setbacks. So it'd be similar to Canyon View, um, that has been built in the last five years, um, where there's several townhomes there, so sometimes they're also called twin homes, if you've heard of that. So two homes that are put together, they can be sold independently. So I could buy one and Fay could buy one, and then a year later Fay could leave and sell it, and I can still live in my townhome as a single-family house. Correct, yep.
That's correct. There's a common wall there.
Will this be similar to your development at Hillside?
Yep.
They, they are beautiful. I mean, if, if they're along that line.
Well, that's kind of what we have planned for that portion, just a lot similar to Hillside Court.
Just to put it in perspective for us, do you have a rough idea of the figure of adding? What cost would be added to add ten more feet of street?
Um, I don't. If Kyle was here, he could probably speak to that a little better, but I know, I don't know what a linear foot's running right now, but what, what was eight hundred is now a thousand per foot. So adding another ten feet, I mean.
That is the point though of these. I mean, I, I think it's become clear that that's one of the questions. And so we can find that information and send that to you so that we can, you know, provide you that information so you can see what those trade-offs are.
Talk about the garages and the storage. Are those dedicated to those apartment-type structures? And you have, then you have structures or has that an additional expense to the family in the, in the apartment-type building?
Um, we haven't done the full design on that yet, but I, I would imagine there's a mixture of, of both. You know, we'll build as many garages as we can to accommodate some of the multifamily, but, you know, looking at a project this size and the availability of storage even in town and with our ordinances, trying to keep things cleaned up and doing a, an affordable housing project, which the majority of them I would guess would be, would be double-car garages. I mean, they're going to have toys. Everybody has toys today. So to even give them an option, kind of in the area that they could store things so Dave doesn't have to tow it all off to the, but just to keep things cleaned up and give a place that looks nice. It'll be, you know, like I said, aesthetically similar to the buildings we're going to do and, and have it right there on site, so.
Bill, when this is built out, uh, Daniel, can you zoom out, please? Okay, then, there you go. What's the total number of homes? What's your threshold? What are you looking at?
I don't have a, a, a full finished master plan. We've played with it a lot. But, you know, my guess between the two sides, we're, we're probably looking at three fifty to four fifty. And then some multifamily there.
I think with that, with that being said, that's the reason I'm really concerned about the streets and everything else. What we approve with this is what's going to be for four hundred homes.
Well, but there's, there's going to be multiple ways out and there's a main artery through the middle of it, which will be Avalanche Road, which is getting redesigned as part of the project. And I think, what was the design on that? It's?
It's a full-width road that Avalanche would not have any lots that front on Avalanche. That way the only, you know, points of conflict are actually at the road intersections. And that's kind of been one of the, the primary points to try to make sure that there's not. And then Avalanche would also likely end up having at least a portion of it, the regional bike trail and that sort of thing, so that, um, it's a lot safer route for people to get to the community. There was a question, uh, from the audience if there would be a TIF as part of this, and there would be, um, the cost of the infrastructure is quite, um, large to get the infrastructure here as well as Avalanche Road being one of the major collectors that would be in our community that would be reconstructed. And then, um, control of that would be transferred over to the city. And so in order to get that constructed to city standards and appropriately designed and everything else, there would be some TIF financing for that.
So kind of back to your question there, Mike. So if you look at like that street, that the one, uh, just above the green, I mean, there's no through traffic going through there. It's that neighborhood exiting and there'll be at least two ways off of that street, probably three once we go north with it. And then these additional roads are going to end up at the top end by the, the little church. We don't have an aerial of that in front of you, but where the other subdivision that was just put in and annexed and have the new streets, we're going to have roads tying in all along the main artery of Avalanche there.
Now, is the old bastion of addition, is that the little triangle in the top-left corner?
Yeah, that would be the southernmost part of.
Yeah, and Avalanche is the, the very oriented north to south.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
So where's the dump from there?
Up the hill.
Up, up and around this one. Where's the church?
Uh, you can't see it on this.
Well, I think for clarity, we need some procedural questions answered. The consideration at hand is the preliminary plan brought forward from these developers. As we move forward, there's discussions, there's infrastructure discussions at that committee level. There's further actions needed by the city as we move forward and the actual planned urban development needs to be approved. Um, I just want to, I guess I just want to draw a line of clarity that if there is action tonight, there is not, there's direction given, but there's nothing in concrete, I guess. There's not anything guaranteed at this point or saying every street's going to be twenty-six feet. You guys said so. That, that, that is not to the degree we're at right now, so I wanted to bring that up for clarity.
And like, like I said early on, this is just a, a, a preliminary plan that is brought to you just to let you know what's going on. So you're, as we're working with the developers, we're getting that information from the council, planning and zoning on what they feel, uh, would be best. And everything that we're going to take from here, we'll work with the developers on, street width, whatnot, and see where they're at.
So do we need to even approve this? I mean, this is just kind of informational.
Other than the avid discussion, there's no action needed.
Yeah, it was, it was my understanding this was brought to council for, for information purposes to let you know what the next, the plans are in this area so we can start moving forward with that. So, but that's, that, I guess that would be a, a question for Mr. Marshall.
Well, make the executive decision. No action needed. I've heard it in the discussion. He concurs. But I think the discussion has been well worth it. And as we move forward, there's some traction and some areas to work together and keep putting this planned paper and try to get something done up there for the need.
Well, and just, I know Becca had mentioned something about the campground up there too. Did you have any specific questions?
Well, just, you know, I, I mean, the, the noise due to, you know, the rally in those two weeks and, you know, the concerns, if any, regarding that.
Sure. Well, I can just tell you what I know and that they, they don't have any bands up there. It is a pretty quiet campground and, and actually in that, the majority of those campsites we own, they're on our property and will eventually be a part of this subdivision in time. We are going to continue that portion of it, but I think 103 of the, the sites up there we do own and control. And a lot of the discussion in the planning meeting kind of came up with that access point because the very, to the right of the green there, I don't know if you can kind of see that, but that's kind of the main access to the camping area right now. And that was a, a topic of, of the traffic flow and the size of the street there. And we're not, we weren't completely satisfied even ourselves with what we were doing there yet. With some of the uncertainties, that's why we pulled that off of this initial phase of it. So.
Well, you know, I mean, personally, I'd like to thank you for taking on this project. It absolutely is needed in our community. I just want to make sure that it's, you know, that the, it's done right for, for the future residents here and that, you know, the, the measurement or the, the development is, is measured and it's done correctly and, and just to the benefit of, of all involved.
Sure. And that's our intentions too, you know? We're all lifelong residents here and we want to build a good community that, that everybody can enjoy. And I don't know that you can ever get it perfect, but I mean, we can do our best to put it together. So thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Dave. Next item. No action also. Other matters before the council. Anything in the public tonight is to be brought forward, non-agenda. Given the fact that, uh, if you do have questions, comments, concerns, and it's not at a council meeting, feel free to call. I mean, we can reach out to council members, reach out to City Hall. They can make sure you get your messages passed on, things like that. So. Counsel, have anything to add for other matters before council? What do you have, Bonnie? Come up to the microphone, please.
That we, that we see different sides come forward in the discussions. And, you know, this isn't easy to do what you guys do. And we're doing a lot of homework in addition to what just comes to the table. And I do appreciate that. And it's not just me, but I think the community is seeing more of that and appreciating that. And I just want to be sure that you hear it. And it's very hard to stand on an issue and represent both sides. And some of them are pretty emotional. I mean, crying out loud, I came of age in the age of Aquarius, you know, pot was everywhere. And I can sit here and support Tyler's right to have the zoning changed simply because it's an irregularity in our zoning. And there is no one more opposed to the legalization of recreational pot than I am. You know, I've been there with that around me. I've seen other communities and metropolis has go there. I don't like what I'm seeing. But that cannot keep us from being objective about some of the issues. And I think the council is doing a pretty good job of paring that out and getting all of that on the table and moving forward with decision-making. So I thank you for a hard night and for taking the time to eat the bread. Because I believe that needs to happen.
Thanks, Bonnie. Any other matters? I do know we're lucky and we didn't accomplish all our executive session. So if there's no other matters before council, is there a motion for exec? They're first by Dean, second by Aaron. All those in favor of exec, please indicate by stating yes. Opposed, a no. It's 9:12. We'll, uh, how about four minutes? We'll start at 9:16. You have four minutes.